Okay, and we're ready.
We're ready, alright. Well, I would like to call this May nineteenth work session of the Port and Commerce Advisory Board to order. Topic of the work session today is to update the Seward Boat Harbor Plan, which we had a work session on this, I'd like to say four months ago? It was a while back. Nancy, were you with us at the first one?
No.
I think the idea was that there were some updates that needed to be made, some of the language, and have you guys?
So, Meredith and I have worked on, have worked on some of the statistics and the data stuff. Some of the bigger stuff about the long-range planning is kind of norm stuff and things have been a little busy, so I think it's still a work in progress.
Right. Yep, for sure. Is the, the copy that we have in here, this is a new draft though, with some of those updates to the data included?
I have several versions of this with several versions of stickies from norm, so it does look to me like this is partly updated.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, right, and then I have stickies and notes and it just, yes, we are, we are short-staffed in the office, so it's a, it's been a little challenging just at the moment.
And the harbor master's been somewhat otherwise occupied?
A little bit.
A little bit?
The whole city manager thing. We did, we did hire somebody new, she's supposed to start June fourth, and then we'll be fully staffed in the office, which will help.
Well, that's excellent news.
Right?
So, Kristi and Jason, thank you both for being here. So, I guess today for this work session, to make the best use of this hour, I'd like to keep it to an hour if we can. We don't really have anything that, you know, the goal was to just bring back some changes and then to go from there, right? Like, we just have these work sessions so that we can talk through things, see what needs to change, so I'm really happy to have you here, Nancy. For anyone who doesn't know or remember, Nancy is the big Kahuna in the office now. She's the one that keeps Norm and Matt in line.
Medium-sized. Melanie left me with some very big shoes to fill.
But I think that it's, I'm really happy that you're here and it would be really valuable to have your input, but I'm wondering also if the board has things that they would like to see changed or visions that they have for the harbor? Yeah, Linda?
Well, I'm just confused about the text that's on page fifteen or eighteen, whatever number we're using.
Fifteen of the packet or fifteen of the plan? Oh, I see. So, page eighteen of the packet, page fifteen of the plan.
Where it's talking about launch ramp improvements, it reads to me like the northeast ramp has been done, but it hasn't been done. I mean, isn't that coming in next year or this fall?
Yes, so that is, it is slated. We do not have a construction date yet, but yeah.
But it says there are two new existing launch ramps.
So, there are now two existing?
Okay, oh, there's now, okay.
Again, I think this might be old language because this plan was from 2014.
Yes.
So, but let's star that because I feel like that's good to see a place that the language maybe needs to be updated.
Yes.
To include the, you know, the revamping of the southwest, and by the time this plan actually goes through, hopefully we'll be well into the repairs to the northeast ramp as well.
I've had several people called who thought it was gonna start this summer, and they were very concerned that we were gonna close the launch ramp this summer.
Yes.
Not till, not till fall was the earliest I had heard, but...
Yes, and that is, that is the case, yes. And I do have some notes here in norm about that, about the south launch ramp was replaced in 2019. We got a lot of good feedback about the south launch ramp, people really like it, it's a, it's a good ramp now. So, yes, the feedback we've had about doing the same thing to the northeast launch ramp has been pretty good.
And, and also on this page, the public restrooms and showers, and I don't know, maybe it's in here somewhere and I've missed it, but we've, we've talked about maybe building a new harbor master office in the uplands? Does that, is that in here somewhere or do we need to add it?
It is not in here as of yet, so, yes. That was something that, that they wanted me to bring up was that, yeah, the harbor master office certainly is dated. There's a reference in here to it needing renovations in the previous plan, but there were no renovations on the table in this version of the plan from however many years ago, so...
Right, right, and then also I know that there's been thought anyway about converting that existing space into a laundromat facility for the boat harbor people, right?
I think...
So, maybe this is...
Managed by the city? Like, is that what, or...
Well, that part hadn't been, that part hasn't been decided. It's just that we need more laundromat facility, especially to service just the harbor even from, from what norm has said, and, and that makes sense to me that you use that older facility to do that and you build the new harbor master in the uplands there.
It would certainly help us to have a view of the harbor.
Yeah, right, you're a little precluded there.
Well, and like this past weekend, we had somebody who pulled up into the Mustang spot, and we, that was reported to us by several boat owners because we don't have a view of the harbor, so when things like that happen in the harbor, we can't see it. People tell us and let us know.
Right.
So, yeah.
So, now, I'm trying to remember from like a usability standpoint, right? In the summertime, that parking lot gets pretty full. What, what is the proposed location? Would it be kind of, let's see, where would that be? The north, like the northwest corner of that parking lot that kind of is the least used? Is that the proposed building location?
I, I do not know. I have not seen the plans, so, yeah. This was, I, this was just something that had been mentioned to me as well just a couple days ago, that the uplands was the site of a potential new building, so...
Is anyone else here privy to any of that?
I, I kinda had the impression it was at the other end where they'd have a better view.
Okay, so, like, kind of where the current bathrooms are across from the Mariners Memorial?
Kinda near that was my... Where the south float is S.
Yeah, so when...
Yeah, please. It's a work session.
So, just, okay, so just in conversation with norm, he indicated it would be that, just, what would that be, just south, a little bit west of S-float?
Okay. Yeah, so the S-float, southwest of S-float, so I'm trying to think, oh, the map is in here, I'm trying to... Okay, yeah, so that, southwest, so, yeah, that is the, southwest of S-float is kind of the northwest corner of the parking lot.
Right.
Unless the float where, unless the S-float access was changed.
So, go down and right like fifty percent of the way on that little gray shaded area? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I think, I think, I'm sure, it'd be most important, this is a planning document, that you just talk about the general need to have a facility that provides certain things. I've looked at other facilities and they do have a very central location for their office, which is, you say it's good for the harbor, everybody, the staff gets a good view as well of the harbor as an enjoyable view and its access to it is much improved. What you do with the old facility, you know, that's obviously gonna have to come into consideration. I personally think allowing private contractors to operate city-owned facilities is a good deal. But I think just generally getting this in the plan would be important, and it's not here now.
Absolutely.
And for my perspective too, in looking through this, my bottom line is, you got a great history and a list of projects, that's great, it's a, you know, it's dynamic and it's all true, but where are you going and what's it gonna cost to get there? So, here's what we wanna do, we need these facilities, a harbor master's office, three million bucks, so you need this, four million bucks, so then we have a general idea on where, where those budgets have to be looked at, where that money's gonna come from is gonna, based on what money we need. So, I think that's important to at least, you know, get something in here that shows, here's what we need and this is kinda what we think is the budget numbers. And I don't think it needs to be anything more than a thirty thousand-foot view.
Sure. Yeah, you know, the Valdez, I was thinking about accessibility and I was like, man, it's kinda nice to have a first-floor office, it's nice that it's very accessible, but the Valdez Harbor Master's Office is up above the restrooms there, that is really nice having that view, so I don't know how to square that. I don't know if a new building would be required to have an elevator, so it'd be, like, is the, with the harbor master's office, if we built a new building, would it have to be ADA accessible? Yes, okay.
That's not a deal breaker to do.
No, no, it's not a deal breaker, I was just thinking, you know, the second floor would be really nice.
That solves the parking problem too, if you put it up and just...
Well, I was thinking below, it depends on what you guys wanna do with the shop because half of the harbor master facility is the harbor shop as well. So, do we move the shop or does the shop stay where it's at? I mean, I guess, the other, the other thing is, that building that's there, I don't know the condition of it, I don't, I know that it's, was in need of repairs seven years ago, but that's also prime real estate that if the city wanted to sell or lease that, I'm sure it would not be hard to do.
Well, and that was, so one of the things that Meredith brought up to me when she found out I was coming to this meeting is that there are a couple things that, yeah, it is, it is prime real estate, so somebody in a more tourist-oriented business could really make good use of that space. It also, being right there where we are, we are the only open customer service city office in that little district, which puts us at ground zero for all of the tourists, all of the parking questions. We take up so many parking questions, can I just tell you, like fifteen a day plus? I have walked people through trying to use the website, I talk on the phone about it all the time, I've walked people through using the kiosks. We spend a lot of time doing non-harbor-related business, which is fine, we're part of the city, it's part of our job, but we do get a lot of ground zero kind of tour, where is the post office, where is the laundromat, can you mail my letter? If we were, yeah, uh-huh, well, they think we're the post office.
Right, right.
Yeah.
There's a flag outside.
Where is, where is the tour bus, where should I go to eat? And a lot of those things are things we can't answer anyway because as part of the city, we can't recommend the private businesses, so we don't do that.
Which is why the chamber is gonna have another sandwich board out saying, chamber office back here this summer.
Well, it brings up a good point, so if the harbor master office moves, who answers those questions then? Because they're not going to make their way all the way to you in the new location. So, now you've got all these people wandering around with unmet needs.
Well, and then who's, whose mandate is that? Because we, we do, we answer questions about parking in particular a great deal, and we field a lot of complaints about all kinds of things, you know, and a lot of those are not part of our specific silo of things that we manage and they're not things we can help about, you know? So, yeah.
I'm wondering if, you know, parking has their mobile trailer.
They don't use it anymore.
They don't use it anymore.
They are providing no in-person customer service this season?
So, you are providing their customer, in-person customer service this season?
There was a time when that was privatized, wasn't it? Is it still privatized?
No, the parking department is being run by public parks and rec.
Parks and rec.
But it was, there was a private contractor on point doing some of that parking?
Not now, as far as I know.
It was years ago. It was probably twenty-plus years ago.
Oh.
Time flies, you know, it's okay. Well, I mean, we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah. Hey, Colby, by the way, feel free to jump in anytime, I'm sorry that, you know, we're just kinda having a free-flowing conversation. Do you have anything that you wanna add?
Uh, thank you, I was just, just gonna interject a little. I can tell you from having an office on the boardwalk that the needs will be met by, you know, just from Linda's question, who will meet those needs, I can tell you that we field just as many questions in our office as the harbor master does, so, you know, as we're open in Aurora Charterers and the White House and, and all these other places here, Kenick Door Tours, there will certainly be, I will happily answer all the questions. If that means that there's a bunch of people in the parking lot, that means that there's a bunch of people in Seward and that's great. So, I think what, also what Bruce said, you know, having, having private enterprise, whether it's sold or leased land, is a great opportunity, whether that's, whether that's a laundry facility or another tour operator or another shop, gift shop or coffee shop or whatever it is, I think that's great. And, and I agree with everybody, what you're talking about with where the plan was for the harbor master office on the uplands. I definitely remember sitting through the meetings when we were talking about getting utilities out there, you know, the sewer and power and boardwalks, how we were gonna do all that, so I do believe everybody's correct that it was gonna be kind of on that, that northwest.
Did you bring up something? I heard from a couple people that the chamber used to have volunteers that were called yellow shirts, yellow vests? This was a while back, that people who volunteered in the summer to walk around with yellow vests on, that were like information providers, that were just, you know, people that wanted to talk to tourists and tell them where to find things, and I thought that was a great idea if you could find people to do it. I also end up doing it, they see you, people walk around lost, and I say, can I help you? Yeah, how do I, uh, like, there's so many people walking around lost.
There's the nearest glacier I can walk to.
Yeah.
I get that question a lot, too.
So, I mean, that's maybe an, an option if there, if there is any interest, you know, if you see people walking around with something that says information and a big bright vest on, you know, maybe that could help take the load off of businesses too, and it just, anything that we can do to make that area, you know, more inviting and get people directed in the right way, like, it's, I don't know. I love our downtown when it's busy, some people hate it, I absolutely love it. I think it's great. One concern, so going back to the harbor master's office, one concern that I have with it being so far down where those bathrooms are, is that a lot of people don't have vehicles when they're in town, they're coming off of their boat, they're wanting to go up and talk to the harbor master, and that's quite a ways from a lot of the floats. I don't think that the, and I guess I'm not saying that the length of the, of the parking lot is that much further, but if it was on that northwest corner, like a little closer to the launch ramps, it's more visible from the road while you still get that view, so that's just kind of, my thinking is that the further down you have it, the harder it's gonna be to find, and the longer of a walk it is for people to get there from the other floats, so that would be my only just consideration in the, in the placement of that building. I mean, perhaps even that corner that's just adjacent to the south launch ramps where there's currently parking, like, maybe, because then it's still access, like, visible from the street? I don't know, it's just, I, I feel like the closer we can get it to the road, the, the better, then you'll still probably have more visitors that aren't harbor-related, but...
No, and I mean, and I think balancing that out between, yeah, like, the accessibility and being able to see the harbor, I mean, you know, the, the tourist and the tourist questions are part of our, our... You know, it's, it's been a particularly long couple of days, so, but it's, it's fine, it's just part of our job, but, but, but the bit about the view of the harbor, so particularly when there are so many kind of big boats coming and going and we have, you know, potential incidents with spills and people pulling up where they're not supposed to, like, being able to see that stuff, I think is, is a, is definitely something that we'd really like.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, yeah, if the offices were on the second floor so that you have that view, then that leaves the first floor open for either shop or, I don't know if the, the restrooms would probably stay, public restrooms there, I don't know if you'd need another set of public restrooms when there's already some down by the memorial, but, I don't know, just open up that space for, for other uses.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Anything that we do is going to take several years, so I wonder what we might be able to do in the meantime to solve the problem of them not being able to see, because there's good camera technology available now, and I wonder if a couple of cameras outside, you know, strategically placed would allow you, them the, the views that they really need to help them be more functional until this all happens, because this is way down the road.
Right.
Timing-wise.
That's not a bad idea, we do get questions about, you know, I know the police department has some cameras in, in the harbor, and then some of the private businesses have webcams as well, but we have, we only have cameras for our building, we don't have any cameras that face the harbor, so when we get questions about incidents that happen or something like that, like, we have to refer people to the police department to see if it's on their cameras.
So, I feel like that's something we should get added to a, a current list of things to do, because I don't think it would be that expensive, and I think that you're flying blind over there, basically, and I, I think in today's world where video technology is so prevalent, it's silly for you to continue to stay blind when you could get coverage.
Yeah, and I will say that that's actually a, it's feedback I've gotten from people, you know, you're supposed to call the harbor when you come in, but then you guys can't see where there's a spot available, so they call and say, where do I go? And you say, well, I don't know what's available because you guys can't see, so it's, from a customer service perspective, it's nice, too.
And I have to send a harbor worker out often to go look at, so like, particularly IT and Z, particularly right now, lots of commercial fishing boats are coming and going, so I don't know what the current state of it, and even the dock log that was done a couple hours ago may be out of date. So, a lot of times, when somebody calls and they're like, yeah, I've got this big boat, I want power, I wanna stay for a month, I have to send somebody down to IT and Z to take a look at it to give me a current feedback, so it would save, it would save labor for the harbor workers and the office to not have to do that, absolutely.
I wonder if that's something that could be worked into the current budget rather than a bigger plan, like, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But I don't know what the, I don't know what the cost of a system like that would be, so I can't pretend to...
I guess, on a different note, we looked at a camera system for another municipal purpose, and it really comes down to, to what degree do you wanna be able to have, like, what function is it, are you just wanting to look down the float and be able to see where there's an open slip, or do you need it to be at, to a degree that's functional for, like, we had looked at, at technology that would allow us to like read license plates and stuff, and once you get to that level of definition, then the cost goes up pretty dramatically, but if you don't need it to be that fine of detail, then it's a lot cheaper, so...
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I use, we have a front point system which uses cellphone towers as opposed to wifi, so you don't have to deal with that, and, and that's a fairly affordable, you know, even if you were to get a commercial-grade version, I would think it would be a fairly affordable solution. You're probably not gonna read license plates unless they're right near the camera.
Right.
But if you wanna be able to see the boat or see the guy breaking into the boat, you know?
Well, the question is, do you need to be able to identify the individual breaking into the boat?
Well, I feel like the, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think that that's really the main, the main function of this. The main function is to make the harbor staff, like, to make their jobs easy, to make them more efficient and to make, so it's more about seeing the empty spot than it is about seeing. Now, if it's a question of, hey, I think that someone ran into my boat and we can see that, no, it was a windstorm and you can tell that, you know, things, things that are that, you know, not in a court of law, but more just informational, it might be nice to have, you know, a week's worth of recordings, but I don't think that the burden would be on the harbor to have, you know, that level of detail.
Yeah, we always tell people, we don't have any enforcement authority or that stuff anyway, so if they suspect there's a crime, they have to call the police department anyway.
Right. And I, I guess I'm wondering if the police department already has cameras, if there's a way to tap into that system for you guys to have access to those cameras?
I think it's worth, it's definitely worth asking, because I don't, I've been told that they have them, but that we don't know where they are and we don't have access to them.
Right.
Then, so that's the extent of my knowledge, so, yeah, it'd be worth asking the question, where are they and, and, yeah.
Okay.
There, I could, it is, Colby, I can tell you, there's one right at the top of E-Cloud, it's right outside of my office, and I would think, I don't, I don't know what the capabilities are, but it looks like it's a, a camera that can pan, so you could certainly get almost the whole view of the harbor, I would think, from, from there. However, I can tell you, I don't know how many years ago now, eight years ago or something, we, we had our office broken into, and I asked if, if they had any footage from the camera, and they, they, at that point, they told me that they weren't working because they had some privacy complaints, I guess, or something from citizens, so I don't know where they're at now with that, but, but it is a great spot for it right here by E-Cloud because you can see the whole harbor.
Yeah, again, great feedback, and even if the, if for some reason, but for security reasons, the police department says we can't let anyone else have access, at least there's power there, maybe like, you know, the city has power run and maybe it would be possible to have two cameras just right on top of each other and that would help with installation costs, but I know this is a little off-topic, but I do feel like that's a, you brought up a great point, and I feel like there's something that can be done.
Yeah.
You know, in the meantime, to help you guys out, that would, yeah. Yeah, Bruce?
Yeah, I'd agree, it is a great topic, and personally, I think we are going through a era of, of need for security that we're gonna get past, and I think we will return to that, that less dramatic time when people are more trusting and more honest, I think we'll return to that. So, getting too overboard with the security, maybe a short-term need, but may not be something we need to plan for the rest of our lives. However, a statement like a harbor building in a, in a, in a location that serves those purposes, I'd much rather see a nice-looking harbor, functional harbor building than a city hall. Sorry, Mayor Terry, but I think we're associated to a harbor here clearly more than city government, so, and with that, and looking at the plan, and maybe I'm missing it, talk a little bit about commercial fishing in here, but I don't see much emphasis on a major commercial user that icicle or seafood or whatever their names are today.
It's OB today.
OBs.
Nonetheless, they occupy the north end of the dock.
They do.
And they're a major contributor. Normally, when I see these types of plans, I see the tonnage of, of landings, and I don't see that in here.
They are, so it looked to me like...
As a trend, particularly as a trend.
In this report, it looked to me like the, the wharfage, so where we were receiving the reports and getting a percentage, it looked to me like that had been fairly recently implemented, so there were only about two years in this report. I do have, in my pile here, I do have some dollar amounts of, of wharfage that we received from, from icicle slash OBI, and it's, it's a, it's pretty significant.
Which way is it headed?
You know, it, it varies tremendously, I, I think the, the commercial fishing years have obviously been up and down and depending on, on the quotas and, and who's out and working, so, but it's been as much as about eighty thousand dollars in wharfage, so that's, we get, the tariff says it's five, five dollars and sixteen cents per ton, so at eighty thousand dollars, that is a lot of fish to it. And, uh, last year it was, last year it was about forty-two thousand that, that we received in wharfage, so...
Whose responsibility is it to maintain that dock that they use?
That is a good question.
Yeah, that's a, that's actually a great question, because the icicle lease was just brought back before council and renewed, but I actually don't know if that includes the waterfront or any portion of, of the dock, like where their crane is.
So, I-dock and T-dock are ours. There are sections of them that are, are loading zones for both fuel and, and for icicle, but the, the, the actual docks are ours. In terms of the, the waterfront and like the, the seawall and that kind of thing, I'm not a hundred percent sure, that would be a normal question.
Thank you.
You know, talking about fishing, when, when we're looking at this plan generally, because obviously there's a lot that can be done looking to the future, one thing that I would really like to see is a user survey, harbor user survey. It would be great to hear from fishing vessels, like, how can the harbor serve you better? And, you know, there's all kinds of ways for surveys to be responsive now, right? If you say, hey, I'm this type of user, there can be a separate set of questions for, for those users. I just know that in, in my time... I just know that in, in my time here and the time I'm on the docks, I get a lot of feedback. I call it feedback from harbor users. Yeah, I know in the office, you guys don't get any feedback at all. But, uh, you know, a lot of the things that people are upset about seem like they're kinda simple fixes. But you kinda hear the same things over and over again. And it's just like processes and systems and oh, and all the other harbors I've ever been to in the entire world, they do it this way. And you guys are the only ones who do it differently, which I know is not the case. But it also, I think would be very useful to see where, as we're making a plan for the harbor and we're thinking about a new harbor office, what would people find valuable? As a harbor user, what do, what can we do better? What do you need more of? Like what can make your experience better, faster? Make you wanna tell all your friends to come and be in Seward, cause our harbor isn't already full. But, but you know, I feel like that could be useful in deciding some of these things. There's a lot of people in town that say, we have to have a crane, like the fishermen will come back if we have a crane. But you know, that's a small handful of people and it would be great. But if we hear from all the fishermen, hey, I would bring my winter fish here if there was a crane, that would be great to know. And that would really help to, to guide this document as, as we make those plans.
Sure. I mean, I, I will say, having, having been to the administrative conference, I think all of the harbors in Alaska all have their own independent set of rules. They all have their own, like they all do things differently. But it's also true that customers that have used our harbor over and over again, don't, don't necessarily like the way we do things. And, and it's, it's part of their story to say, you know, well, every other harbor I've ever been to has never done this. Nobody else has ever required me to have insurance. No, I thought we could just pull up and plug in. I thought you had a way to just track that. That, that's another thing I've heard about six times this week. So, and then, you know, and I know our policies and procedures, and this may be a little off topic, but I know our policies and procedures feel onerous to people sometimes. And I'm, I'm really working at communicating those better on the front end, so people get less surprises. Like really communicating them consistency, consistently, so that people are hearing the same thing from all of the staff and they're getting enough information upfront. We do have a lot of extra policies in place because of the number of people we've had try to work around the rules in one place. So the rules about the slip sizes are really strict and kind of difficult because, because that's, that's the way they have to be, you know? Because the moment we make an exception for somebody, you know, somebody else comes along and says, you know, you let somebody else do this. So we're trying to be as consistent as possible. I'm really trying to get the messaging in particular as consistent as possible. But it is, this is a challenge to balance the sort of the needs of the policy with the needs of the customers and
Right.
And then the tariff is, is what it is. So it, it limits what we can do in any case, but.
I, I, I like the idea of a survey, frankly. I was, I was looking, uh, at the document to try to gauge, uh, or gather from it, where the input, the user input was in this. Uh, that's always helpful, as long as it doesn't become, it's not a democracy.
Right.
Yeah, but, uh, but getting that so that you can assist them. But one of the things I've seen sitting on this board is that when people really have a heartburn with harbor rules, we, we see them at PACAB. And Mayor Terry can remember when she was in the chair and even before that. Uh, we haven't seen all that, that much in the last few years. So I, I, one of the biggest problems was the lack of slips. And the people that I know, who, a few people that I know that have boats that have gone elsewhere, it was because they couldn't get a slip when they wanted it, not the cost.
Right.
They went to actually other places where it costs as much or more. So I think you're resolved one of the big problems by having, you know, a, a good plan, meeting the criteria of the boat's sizes, or the people that, the size of the boats that need spaces. I, 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 I would like to see some sort of a survey and, and those are tough. Cause where do you spread it out? You know, who actually responds? Uh, you're always gonna get the vocal guy who responds. But it's not that person that you really wanna tap. You wanna have the person that's kinda quiet. You know, that's thoughtful and give you the real input. Where, where, how do you get them to respond? I don't know. So even though we want it, I'm not sure that it's a practical thing to do.
Yeah, Linda.
Yeah, I, I agree. I like the idea of a user survey. My curiosity is how, what, what kind of contact information do you have for slip holders? Do you have email addresses or?
It varies tremendously. We do have email contact information for most of the people in our system. But we have a couple of people in our system that don't have cellphones even.
Right.
So, um, you know, there's a whole, there's a whole spectrum of, of users in Alaska from people who are pretty old school and have flip phones and don't answer email and, and people who do. So if you wanted to reach a, a large swath of our customer base, it would probably have to be a, a multi-faceted kind of outreach, so.
And the city has done surveys before. And I guess if you sent out to the ones you do have email for, and then there's an article in the paper about it and it's posted at the post office and we talk about it here at PACAB and well, I mean, maybe it could even be before we come back from hiatus. But, um, the yacht clubs would put it out, you know, I feel like you could still get pretty good response from.
You would get a lot of data from that, I am sure.
Yeah, right. And then there's the cost associated with staff time to go through all of that data. But I don't know, I feel like it could be a valuable exercise, um, something to think about.
You wouldn't wanna get this plan completed and then decide to do it. I mean, you're, right now, you're at the point where you could include something like that and, and use some data response. And everybody's about collecting data today. So everybody looks at this would say, oh, here's the data category. You got some graphs and stuff in here.
And then there are some, you know, there are some things that we, we hear chronic complaints about, that there's only so much we can do about, like the state of the public restrooms. And the amount of effort we put into trying to keep the public restroom civilized in the summer versus the amount of effort people spend vandalizing them and and, and, um, and, and we hear a lot of complaints about the restrooms. And like, we work really hard at that and there's just only so much we can do. So there are definitely things you are gonna hear about that, like, yeah.
And I, I actually think that the restrooms look amazing, always.
Compared to other places, they're top notch.
You guys do a great job.
I would agree with you Laura, a hundred percent. They're the cleanest bathrooms in, in, in the city, I think.
Yeah, you guys do an amazing, I'm sorry to hear that. You guys do. Just sorry, I'm just like, my brain is turning over how to like possibly fix that.
No, I mean, we've had tenants ask us to, um, to just issue keys to all of the tenants, so only the tenants can, but we can't do that. Right, we can't lock them. We can't put cameras inside the bathrooms. There, like, there are a whole bunch of things that we can't do that people suggest.
Right.
Um, we do have cameras in the, in the harbor. We have them on the token machine outside. They're outside the doors, um, and they're open twenty-four seven, so.
You guys need attendants in the bathrooms, like handing out mints and handing people back towels.
I'm sure we could get somebody to volunteer for that, totally.
Jason's yellow vest.
Yes, yes.
They used to have, big cities back east, there used to be an attendant.
I know.
It was a prestigious job, actually.
Yeah.
That's long ago.
I mean, I know it's a joke, but actually if there was someone in a yellow vest outside the restrooms, I mean, just standing outside so that when someone goes in and they see a problem, they could just tell the yellow vest that there's a problem. Or when someone's walking out with, with a soap machine to be able to, I mean, I'm just saying, it would not be a terrible place to have someone stand. On the other side of the wall, just outside those bathrooms, it would be a good, good location. That's what I wanna do in retirement. I wanna be a yellow vest.
I did not mean to sidetrack the conversation like that. I apologize.
I mean, these are all, these are all like, it's good to know how we need to support you guys moving forward too. Because I've been in there when there are people screaming at you guys and it's unacceptable. They, they put up with a lot. And currently, while they're understaffed, uh, Meredith and Nancy are both working two days by themselves in the harbor office. So they're taking on a, a massive workload right now. So that being said, I have one more, I have one more comment that, just generally, just to keep this general. When you look at the SMIC development plan, the SMIC development plan is very action oriented. And the one thing we had mentioned last time was that this plan is lots of information. It's like a history of the harbor and it's so much good info. But it's not a lot about what, where we're going from here. And so that, we kinda have a fresh slate, like there's a jumping off point. And I feel like there's an opportunity to add in that, the future, the future plans. So, um, you know, as specific as we can get at this time with, we'd like to move the harbor office and we'd like to use, we, you know, making some of those smaller decisions that are gonna be important for planning. Like are we gonna keep the shop or do we wanna move the shop as well? And so if we keep the shop, are we going to lease out or sell the other half of the building or tear it down? And like, you know, some of those things, um, you know, if we can make it a, a plan so that when grant funds become available or other things like that, there's something in writing to say, hey, this is not a new project. This is something that we've thought of. So yeah, any, any things that, uh, any things that, that you and, you know, your staff, you guys know things the best. I know if you were to sit down with, with, you know, with your guys, um, that work in the harbor every day, they're gonna have suggestions on what they'd like to see and what, what could make their lives easier. Because really, when we're talking about efficiencies, that, that's a big part of it too. Like what is gonna make, um, if you guys are able to do your jobs better, the harbor's gonna function better and it's gonna be better for the end user.
Yes.
So I don't know if there's, uh, some of the docks have the GFCI breakers. Is the plan to move all of them? What does that look like? What is the cost for that? When do we want to do that? I know there's gonna have to be a huge mess, messaging campaign that goes with that as well. Because a lot of people aren't gonna be able to plug into power once there's GFCI breakers.
That is an issue that we have.
Well, a lot of those projects have gone grant to grant.
Exactly.
And you know, here, here's the sites for this year's, uh, the state money and that's the project that comes to the fore. But I, I, I agree. And that's kinda why I was talking about the, you know, where are we going?
Yeah.
And what's gonna cost us to get there? And, and, uh, I mean, what you've done is tremendous. I mean, I, I, I put a, I, I stood over by the, the, uh, the lift thing the other day and took a video around there and sent it out on my Facebook page. And I mean, I'm really proud to be able to look back over that and see that new, uh, facility that didn't just happen. Didn't just happen. It takes planning and you gotta be out ahead of that. I mean, the people that sat on this board for years in the past were thinking about this day. And this board needs to be thinking.
I like the idea of a brochure that has this, a map of the slips. And then, you know, maybe slip rates. Or if you're, you know, a little thing about what, if you're transient, if you want storage.
So we have a, we have available to hand out to customers in that we have, uh, we have the rate sheets, we have the boat lift rates. We have a map with all of the slips that shows the transient with no power and transient available with power and all of the slips. And there's a map of Seward on the back with some reference points. But the, it's a, it's a very, there's a lot of information. We build the mortgage by, by foot and, uh, and then by time level. So it's, it's hard to condense some of that. Like you can't really hand out just a simple rate sheet because the rate design isn't all that simple.
Maybe a high level overview that tells them where they can go, like online. I'm sure all this stuff is also available online, so.
Are you talking about like an eight and a half by eleven folded in half?
Like tri-fold, you know, or something like that. The size of a rack card when you get it folded up.
And it does have a map of the city that maybe has like the location of the library and the post office.
Yeah, the, the, our slip, our slip map that we have has a, a map of Seward on the back with, yeah, like some basic locations like that. But yeah, the, the rates break down by, by month, by six months, by year, by day, by foot. So it gets, there's no like one blanket answer you can give to people about, well, this is the slip rate. Like this is the daily rate, but if you, it, yeah.
Yeah, but most people, I mean, not everyone, but most people are gonna have a smartphone. So if they had that brochure and then it said, go to this address to find the rate.
QR code on a sticker on the door, seriously? Like something on the door with a big QR code that says, for harbor information, scan this code and it takes them to the website.
That's a good idea.
Would you call it a smart card?
No, it's a QR code.
It's a QR code.
Those squares.
And people are used to using them now. I mean, this past year has gotten people really used to using QR codes. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and then maybe, um, you know, maybe some work could be done to build out the website a little more, to have pages that are specifically for, like, if you're this type of user. Cause right now there is a lot of information there, but it's not necessarily tailored to, you know, if, if it's, you know, a harbor user, they don't need this whole list of documents that's available there, but that's.
One of the things, uh, some of you may know, I sit on a, a mountain, Ternigan Arm Heritage area. One of the things that we had to go through this year, where we had a bunch of grants applicants for mapping. And they wound up being from different groups and different areas that were overlapping. So what we chose to do was table all of them and get them to coordinate. And I'm, and I'm hearing, what I hear sounds like different agencies. I mean, the Chamber's a private group, but it has a strong contact with the city. The harbor and the city all have this kind of information that needs to get to the public. And I, I would hope that there's an effort to coordinate them. Because if there was a central, you know, Jason mentioned the, whatever they call that cue card or whatever it is.
QR code.
Um, if there was a central clearinghouse where all these services are available, one-stop shopping kinda thing. Otherwise, it, it, you continue the confusion.
Sure. So, so right now, the harbor, there's a page on the city of Seward website for the harbor. And there's a sub-page for harbor documents. And that's where I refer people. And that has our, all of the things that you would need as a harbor user. There's a map of the harbor, the rate sheets are there. We have a list of, when we give out a list of boat repairs, we're obligated to give out a list of all of the city approved. Cause we're not, we're not allowed to, um, uh, show preference to an individual business. So we have to be careful. The Chamber can do slightly different things in terms of the information that we just like. We have to be very careful that we're not giving anybody preferential treatment in the information we disseminate. But, uh, there is a documents page with all of the harbor documents, so all of the rate sheets are available there. I, I point people to it. But it is a lot of information. I mean, the rate structure is dense.
Yeah.
You know, the, the rate structure, the way we build, the way we build boat lifts, the way we build mortgage, it's, it's dense. And, uh, you know, and even just trying to explain that to people over the phone gets really complicated. And there's, you know, are they coming in for six months? Are they planning to leave for six months? Are they gonna be in town? Do they need power? You know, are they, are they fishing? Are they chartering? It's hard to even pick, like, you know, if you're this customer type, this is the information that you need. Because a lot of times when they call us, they don't know the information that they need.
Yeah.
And they assume a bunch of things that we have to break down differently for them, so.
So I would suggest there, under some topics here like harbor master offices shop, dissemination of information
Yeah.
is, is a planned activity.
Yeah.
And I guess I'm just thinking, I've used, um, I've incorporated in some of the stuff that I've done lookup tables, um, where potentially this is just something that can be built out, maybe with the help of IT, where on the website, there could maybe be something that says, what's the length, the overall length of your boat? And it can pull out and give them like, these are your rates for this length of boat for daily, monthly. Where it's basically just taking that and it's cross-referencing it to a table. And it could, the result could be, this is how much your mortgage would be depending on if you're, you know, if you're transient or if you have a permanent slip. And this is what your boat lift fee would be. And it can just pull all of that of, out of other spreadsheets. But that might be a way where you can say, hey, you can go to our website, type in the overall length of your boat and it'll give you what all of your rates will be for your particular. That, I, I just would think, you guys spend so much time on the phone
We do.
telling people information that is available other places, but it's kinda hard to find. That might be something that would take a lot off of
Sure.
your plate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had the same thought. I had the same thought. But that, there's, there are ways now with the technology to make it easier for people. So when they get to that page where all those documents are, that's still probably overwhelming to some people. So, uh, like a, an entry portal, you know? I'm an individual user, I have a sailboat or I have a, you know, or I have a, and I wanna do this and I wanna be here for this long. And then it spits something out to them.
A menu.
Well, and in, in that, along those lines too, having online forums where people can be inputting their data.
That is a thing I would like to see happen, cause we don't even accept electronic signatures right now. And people complain about, you know, I can sign my mortgage electronically, why can't I sign it? So I would like to see online forums. That is definitely something that's, um.
That takes staff time though.
It does. I mean, and so some of these things, um, you know, I think are kind of on, on my plate for, for fall and winter of next year in terms of trying to streamline some things and trying to get some online forums that people can fill out. Cause it just, the summer is just gonna be too busy. It is clearly going to be a really busy summer in the harbor. And, uh, and we will be training somebody. Um, and, uh, and we will be training somebody in June, which will be really exciting. So, uh, yeah, we're not, we're not going to have the time to work on great big projects in the, in the, in the harbor in the summer.
Absolutely.
But I would like to see online forums in particular. I think that's something that we could absolutely do and accept online signatures. We can figure out a way to do that. That's very reachable.
And so, Stephen, since you're the higher level city person here, right? Like, I, I feel like this isn't, to take it beyond the harbor, that's something that the whole, all of the city departments could probably benefit from. Is that something that IT has looked into at all? Like, having some kind of, because there is software that can do it, but it probably, the more, the more that things are the same, the easier they are to use. So, if it's the same platform being used across all the departments to put forums online and things, that's, that's easier. And I don't know if that's something that, can the harbor call IT and say, hey, we have this project, can we work together on it? Or does that have to happen at budget time? Or how does, how does that interaction work?
So, I can get back to you with more specifics. So, we, we're having a little bit of a hiccup and I'll try and be brief on this. But, um, moving towards like online, streamlining our digital processes for like business licenses and other, you know, fire department inspections and forms and whatnot. And the provider dude solutions is having some operational issues, um, just getting that project. But what you're describing there is the long-term objective of that greater vision to make things less paper and more digital in general. And so, our, our goal is to try to get like business licenses and some of the most common transactions to take place through that online portal. And then down the road, to be able to do the types of things that you guys are describing here throughout the entire organization. So, it's definitely something that's on the radar, bravy, radar, good grief, I'm sorry. It's on the radar long-term, but, um, we're not quite at that point yet.
Okay, but there is, I guess, I'm just trying to not reinvent the wheel. You are working with a company. You, you already are contracted with someone that's helping with that in other departments.
Correct.
Okay. With, are those, once that's done, is, are they just helping to do the labor? Or is, are all the forms and all of that stuff actually held through that company? So, if you decided not contract with them again, would we be at square one?
No.
There's going to be an update on all this Monday night at the council.
Oh, okay, okay. I'll wait.
Trying to keep, keep it the upper age structure.
No, that's okay. All right, well, I think that that's, um, that's enough on that.
It's the right direction. It's the right question.
Yeah, it's the right, it's the right direction.
And cheers Snyder, I forgot to mention to you, Erin does have to leave at one.
Okay, and I think we're almost there. Any, uh, parting comments? And anyone on the phone that has anything they'd like to share?
Yeah?
Okay. All right, um, Linda, do you have anything?
No, I, I think we've got a good list of things to do. And, um, as, I, I think we made it clear that from our point of view, this document needs to become more of a working in the future as opposed to a historical recap. I mean, the history's great, but we really do need to be much more, because there's things we got to do and they're not really encompassed in.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's really good feedback. I mean, um, we definitely need to spend some time kind of rewriting it in, in our office, which, uh, which alas, we don't have right now. But, um, but, yeah, it definitely, I think, turning it into something that's a little more future oriented and a little less, this is the State of the Union from five years ago to now and making it more like, these are, this is where we'd really like to go. I think it's a really good idea. Bruce, do you have anything?
Uh, this is our last meeting for the...
This is our last, these are your final words until September.
Uh, well, yeah, and my term is up midsummer and I have a decision to make that I haven't got to yet. But I did take an opportunity to drive in today, uh, through past year facility and, uh, and Joe's, uh, took us to facility there. I was impressed with the way this thing looks, the way the uplands are developing uh, that surround the harbor. I'm glad we're talking about the, what used to be a small harbor, but the harbor, uh, because it's a critical part of Seward and it's a central part that most people see. And it looks great. So, I, I just leave it with that. Whatever happens, I'd like to talk with the mayor before I leave, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Do you guys have anything?
I mean, I think, um, I think it's a, it's a good idea that we, you know, we plan to work on this and present an updated draft of it in the fall when, when PACAB comes back. I think that's very, very doable. And Meredith has put a lot of work into it and, and, uh, and she's great. And, uh, yeah, I, my, my dad's a marine biologist. I've been in harbors literally all over the world. And like, I, I, Seward's such a great harbor. Like, it's really, it's so clean and it's so well organized. And, and I'm actually, I feel really grateful to be a part of it. I know that sounds goofy, but, uh, but it's really true. So, yeah, it is. It's a great harbor. And like, watching all of the people work together to make things happen is, you know, like, it's a really well organized yard over at SMIC. It's awesome. I mean, I have seen some, seen some places. So, yeah, I'm, I am. I'm really grateful to be a part of it, anyway.
Thank you for your time and for being here, Nancy. We appreciate you.
So, I guess the only thing I, just to reiterate what Nancy just said. So, I've kept my own personal boat in different ports in southeast Alaska and Juneau, Huna, Ketchikan, et cetera. And, um, we definitely, definitely, definitely have one of the most smooth operating harbors. And I tell you, from the high level, the department that, um, I get involved in the least is definitely the harbor because it operates pretty darn effectively. I, I'm really proud of it, honestly, and I think our whole community should be that, you know, we have growth, um, we have overwhelming demand, right? Things are in store. We've got a lot of work to do just to polish that gem a little bit more. Um, and I guess just as parting words to PACAB, I'm looking forward to working with you guys in the fall. It's going to be a lot on your plate again next year, which is good. Um, and it's exciting to see the content that you guys pass along to council to fulfill your vital role. And, yeah, I hope you enjoy your summer hiatus. See you on the other side.
Thank you. Any, anything from the, from our visitors today?
You know, I was desperately trying to find the SMIC plan, but it, in my memory, I thought it was the Seward Marine Industrial Center Development Plan.
Yes.
Where this is just a Seward boat harbor plan. So, maybe that's why there's a difference in how they're presented and, and the format.
Yeah.
So, if it's, if it's more like the board wants to be involved with the Seward boat harbor development plan, maybe, maybe that's the difference between the two plans. Like, this is more like the plan for the area where SMIC has always really been an action-driven plan.
Yeah.
But I couldn't find that plan in the, in the, so that's...
Okay. Jason, do you have anything?
Laura, real quick, before y'all adjourn. Um, since this is y'all's last meeting before September, I will send out an email as well. But just an informational item, HP did schedule their joint work session with y'all on the historic overlay for October fourteenth at 6:15 PM. So, just get that date on your calendar.
Oh, sure, okay.
Yeah, if you could email that out to everyone, that would be perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Man, well, I guess for, for all of the talk about improving the boat harbor, I would also just like to say, and I, I hope that I say it enough, um, I work with the harbor staff daily and they are amazing. Both in the office and the guys running the lifts and both Matt and Norm and their responsiveness to when you do have issues. I mean, we couldn't hope to do better. So, thank you guys all for all of the, the work that you put in. Um, and honestly, a lot of the things that I want to see change are just to make your lives easier. It makes, it breaks my heart that people treat you the way that they do. And I, I'm just trying to think of ways that we can improve processes so that it takes less of your time and kind of helps to get people the information they need so that they don't come into your office screaming at you, because that's never, that's, uh, never okay. So, uh, Bruce, I heard, I heard you say you have decisions to make this summer, but I hope to see your application in the
One way or another.
Council packet, uh, this July when your term is up. But, um, thank, thank you all for your service on the board. It's been a really, really busy and fruitful spring and I really look forward to seeing you all in the fall. Everyone have a great summer. Colby, did you have anything before?
Uh, no, no. I just would reiterate what you just said to Bruce.
We'll see you here in September, Bruce. All right, thank you. Uh, adjourned.
All right, thank you.